Over, sign it up. Just have a word prayer for again. Father in heaven, we thank you for all that you do for us and we pray, Lord, you might continue with us and guide us in the way that we should go with the decisions we should make. We thank you for this opportunity to serve the people of Marion County and we pray in glory for it all. Once again, forgive for what we failed, amen?
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which the saints, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll need the order. Now, motion, we approve the minutes.
I might get motion.
Second. All papers say aye.
Aye.
Both saying aye. Now, motion, we approve the flag.
This might be motion.
Second.
Second.
All papers say aye.
Aye.
All opposed likewise. Uh, nine o'clock, Mr. Hargrove. You have the standing members.
Thank you Chairman. Uh, gentlemen, commissioners, I appreciate everyone's opportunity to be here as a representative of Dynamic Security. As everyone knows, I'm the Vice President with Dynamic Security. We've provided service here since two thousand sixteen. I wanted to give an update, a status update based off of our corrective actions that we've taken, uh, basically since an incident that occurred in February. So, starting in March, I was reacquainted with the courthouse, uh, the personnel, and I'd like to specifically give some, some praise to, to the Chairman, uh, Bob, you, uh, Commissioner Holt, Sheriff Williams, and Brooke Slaton. We, we worked well together to identify some, some areas that needed improved. We've, uh, now have found two very solid qualified security officers who are Marion County residents who were approved by the Sheriff, uh, Office to include the Sheriff himself. They're doing a phenomenal job, been very, very pleased with their performance. They interact with the community, interact with the public very, very well. However, they uphold the standards and requirements that we've placed on them. So, I'd like to give just a stat, uh, a couple stats here that's really astonishing. It started since April first of this year. Security Officers Rihanna Cochran and Security Officer Charlotte Flemings have found the following contraband items entering the courthouse. A total of three hundred and seventy-nine knives. A total of seven guns, five of which were carried by female visitors. Twenty-seven mace or pepper spray items, all twenty-seven carried by female visitors. Four tasers, two of which were carried by female visitors. Nine sets of brass knuckles. Kind of confused, I didn't know people still carry brass knuckles. The reason these numbers are alarming to me is potentially all it takes is one of these weapons to get in the hand of a prisoner that's being, you know, in the courthouse for, for various reasons. And, uh, we've had what we call the old P thirty-eights, the old military can openers that still have the blade on them. Uh, had confiscated a total of, uh, fourteen of those. So, in the last month and a half, month and twenty days, we've confiscated four hundred and fifty-two items. Now, those items are returned back, uh, once the visitor leaves the courthouse. But that's some pretty amazing numbers to think that this far along in this process, we're still having that, that amount of stuff. That shows a phenomenal, uh, presence by the security officers and them checking individuals, making sure folks are entering the courthouse that are following the guidelines that's been established by the county elected officials. So, again, uh, that's some of the stats. We're very, very pleased. We also have a third officer, Seth, and I do not want to mispronounce his last name. So, if anyone can pronounce it, feel free. Uh, but, but our primary officers are Rihanna Cochran and Charlotte Fleming. Done an excellent job and again, Commissioner Holt, uh, Chairman, Sheriff, I appreciate your time. We've met on a couple different occasions to, to work out some things that needed to be worked out. And, um, so appreciate your support and as always, we're here to help provide, you know, the citizens, the employees of Marion County with a safe working environment. Uh, anyone have any questions? One of the most suggestions that I would like to offer is maybe at some point in time, we get a photo with the officers and maybe with you, uh, Sheriff, uh, and maybe remind the citizens or something on newspaper about what they can't bring or what they can't bring. Uh, what I'm afraid of is if we just get one of these slips through and finds its way in the wrong hands. And, and gentlemen, for your knowledge, uh, it's a common thing, uh, in the courthouse security, sometimes people will leave things in the restroom area. People will leave things for one of the prisoners and, and I know the Sheriff and I have had this conversation many times. Only takes one of those, uh, to be left somewhere to maybe get through. The new procedures, we say the new procedures, the procedures, I went back to the old way, the way they were initially identified, walking through. That helps, uh, prevent someone from passing something off to someone in line. And again, those two security officers are doing an exceptional job. Uh, to my knowledge, I'm not aware of one single complaint, uh, but those two officers.
I love you.
Brooke, are you, I know, I mean, not one single complaint. Yes. So, my only thing I'm frustrated with is we didn't have these two a couple years ago. That's, that's it. But, uh, that's all I've got. Thank you.
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
What about, uh, everybody's required to go through the metal detector, right? Even us?
Yeah, the question was, is everyone required? I'm glad you asked it, Commissioner. It's my recommendation that everybody go through the metal detector, uh, to include, you know, the elected officials. You're kind of setting an example. That has been an issue and it's something we're in the process of discussing. Uh, some of the employees try to circumvent, not go through.
Cause most shootings is by employee.
Well, it's, it's, it's funny that you mentioned that because I think my second phase, and if you like, I could go ahead and, and go, uh, do you have those handouts, Brooke, by any chance?
I have.
Okay, may I have mine? So, gentlemen, I'm an active shooter awareness instructor. And this particular instruction and course is not designed to kick the doors in or respond as the law enforcement element. But this course is designed on procedures and policies and training that you can provide folks. But this is in a, a shortened version. But you have a little handout there and, and the very first handout where it says, who is it about? What it's about is the safety of the employees. This particular is a slideshow presentation idea. This particular lady is actually holding the picture of her son who was killed in an active shooter situation. Uh, so it is about the safety and security and we recommend that everybody go through. Uh, and I know several of you and, and, uh, Mr. Dale Holt's always been one going through, wanting to be checked and, uh, the Chairman has as well. And by doing that, it, it only stops because you are right. Typically, it's going to be an employee of someone who builds up to their vehicle, circumvents the system and, and comes back through. So, that second slide there, your, or page, you'll see that that's a family, the, of a mother, two beautiful children that were left behind because, uh, the father and the husband was killed. So, you, you see the individual, Mr. Steven Highron John, but, but an important slide or important thing here is deadly encounters. And so, on this page here has active shooter data. Seventy-one percent of the attacks are simply walk through the door of the location. They simply walk through, there, there's no security procedure in place. It's someone who they simply walk through the door. They're not sneaking in, they're not doing anything of that nature, they're simply walking in. And you'll see that that's, when it constitutes seventy-one percent, if you go over to the right side, your deadly encounters, sixteen altercations were at government facilities and these were all courthouses. So, you've had sixteen incidents where there have been shootings at courthouses. Now, that could be the family member for someone that's in court, uh, but typically percentage is going to be of someone who worked at the particular courthouse, who worked there. Now, another staggering, it's thirty-seven percent of the attacks are over in less than five minutes. So, it's not a lengthy process, it's not a long drawn out thing. Thirty-seven percent is over in less than five minutes. That's, gentlemen, I like to say that's just one good song in church on Sunday. It's one hymn out of the book, five minutes is over. So, now, um, some of my stats that I give, and I mentioned how many guns were by female visitors and how many, because this next slide, something people forget from time to time, but thirty-two percent of active shooters are actually female. So, when I voiced the stats there from the, the contraband item, that was the reason for me doing that, is to let you know that. That's why I think it's important that our female security officers are doing an excellent job. They're there to, uh, their, their interaction with the female visitors have been very, very positive. And they're forceful enough to know that our male visitors understand they need business and have a witness in firsthand. Uh, if we look at our next slide, our probability, I want to make sure that everyone completely understands what this means. It says number of employees, but that's misleading for something like the courthouse. Cause it's not this number of employees that actually are assigned to the courthouse, it's the number of visitors that you have. It's the, if you have grand jury, the number of folks that you have coming into that courthouse, it's pretty, it's pretty amazing, the number of folks you've got. I've, I've seen line out the door, people wrapped around coming in. Uh, the security officers are moving as quickly and as, uh, thoroughly as they can to make sure that things are being handled the way they're supposed to be. But that's pretty amazing. And when you have things going on such as relatives and domestic violence situations, that increases the opportunity for something happening. Obviously, when you have fraternization, then you always have the possibility of terminated employees or whether it's, they're at the courthouse or they're potential county employees. And not to mention all the folks that the Sheriff Department is upset by doing their jobs out there. Uh, you always have the percentage for someone coming into the courthouse with, with bad intentions on their mind. And that first line of defense is the security officers. And that, that's why we highly recommend from the security side is that everyone gets checked. Now, if there's going to be some exceptions to that, uh, we can, you know, identify that among, you know, the elected officials and things of that nature. Majority of the courthouses that we do, uh, Mr. Cochran is, everyone is checked. Occasionally, you have a visiting district attorney or maybe a visiting judge or something, there's an exception, but typically, everyone is checked. Uh, in most recent years, this is just a stat that's provided to show you that in the last, uh, last year of two thousand eighteen, you had forty-six established incidents of active shooters at a place of work. This is not at your backyard barbecue or anything, this is a bona fide place of business, an actual work event. Uh, it's in your typical targets. It said, I haven't been to many churches in the last six months teaching a, uh, safety and security at, at churches. So, it's sad that that's a target, but you'll also see courthouses are a target. We run into situations where there's a criminal element coming in from time to time at the courthouse, obviously, seeing the judge or being convicted, family members. But you also just have, uh, your residents who are coming in, they're upset, frustrated with something. Whatever that something is, it, it, it's enough for them to, uh, potentially, uh, do something harmful. Significant thing about the active shooter, at one point in time, there was a profile that identified what the active shooter's supposed to look like, how old they're supposed to be and all this stuff. But the active shooter today, it could be the person sitting next to you, it could be the person sitting next to you at the restaurant, it could be the, your neighbor, it could be the person down the road, it could be the person in your area of responsibility that you would never know. And typically, it's going to be less than twelve minutes. Uh, it's been, it always lasts less than twelve minutes. Seven steps to ready, things that, that you can do to help is situational awareness, is, is looking at the situation, which I think, uh, I will, you know, give praise here. There've been some reviewing policies and procedures, we went back to the way they were initially established. Uh, but you have, uh, to identify your nearest entrance, entrances and exits. Uh, everybody's basically funnelled, funnelled through one, um, area, which is the most recommended means. They have to go past the security officer, they have to go through a metal detector. They're, they're, not only are they being checked for weapons, but also the officer's checking their, are they intoxicated? Or is there just something going wrong that maybe we need to contact the deputy to have a conversation with this person before they actually go into the, to the facility? Uh, there's been a couple of recent times where the individual seemed to be a little frustrated or upset for whatever reason, and the security officers were able to escort that person to that particular, uh, department in the courthouse and maybe stand there while they were conducting their business. This comes into play a lot with property taxes, we've seen. And we're not particularly happy with what they, they've got to pay, so, so they do that. But, uh, I think some of these steps right here will definitely, uh, you know, and, and provide some assistance. But it's, it's my recommendation again, that, that everyone be checked. Because of the amount of, again, with over four hundred and fifteen pieces of contraband weapons, uh, all it takes is one of those to make itself to the wrong place. One of those to make itself to a courtroom. Uh, your judges are in danger, your employees of the county can potentially be in danger.
Follow up on the question, how close are we to all?
We are currently checking everyone with the exception of a few that just refuse to, to, to be checked.
The few being judges?
Yes, sir. Uh, so that, that's something I know that maybe an executive session that you guys.
They do have some individuals inside the courthouse that are bypassing.
Of what?
We have some that are bypassing. We don't have the badges in place yet for the rules to determine who is supposed to be able to bypass and who isn't. But I think Kevin's working on that.
They're, they're going past and they, uh, they don't have the badges yet that allow them to, to go, but they go through it. The other big issue, and I've, I've observed this myself, uh, just a couple weeks back, some of the employees will leave, go to their car and come back. And they don't want to come through the security checkpoint. In their mind, I just walked out, but that's exactly where things are dangerous because that's when they can leave and go to their car and get that and come back in. So, everybody looks at it as a big headache, but it's for the safety and the security of everyone in the county. So, you know, we all, the, the, the female security officer is doing an exceptional job, but as I say again, and one of the things they're trying to do is interact with the community more, if something brought up more, a little more interaction, communication with them. Uh, but occasionally, somebody just gets frustrated and they don't want to go through it. And they don't want to upset everybody that works in the courthouse. These are folks that you got to see every day and work with. But I have, Chairman, I personally witnessed that, actually brought it to your attention when I came over. I saw one particular, uh, employee leave twice in a fifteen, twenty minute time that I was standing there talking to the security officers. And when I addressed it with the security officers, that, that was mentioned, well, she does that all the time, she doesn't like to be checked when she goes to her car.
Don't take five seconds, so.
I agree, sir, and that's what, you know, I come into work now, you know, you're upset and I leave, I go to my car, I get something, I come back and.
You see a lot of that.
We do.
The sad thing about it is, we're responsible for this. It's on our heads, it's on our hands if something happens. It's where, where here we're counting for.
Absolutely, and everybody's, everyone's going to remember that. And, and gentlemen, we, we provide service at another courthouse, uh, I'm not going to call the name, where everybody was checked, but they had a list of folks who were exempted and they had, and used a, a separate door.
I'm fine with that, I'm fine with it. The people elected, they know, you know, they know their employees. And I'm fine with that.
Well, we sit down.
Question I have for y'all, y'all, y'all are the midterm factor. My office and my secretary is willing to make up picture IDs for certain people. But the question I have for you, who, who gets those ID, who gets that pass, elected officials? Y'all have to sit down and let me know.
Well, didn't we sit down and discuss this?
We have discussed it before.
Well, we need, we need to.
But, little bit, Brooke.
That was discussed in one of your courthouse security meetings and y'all did an addendum and y'all listed that out. Do y'all want me to go get that addendum so that you can have that list?
I'm fine with it.
Yes, if you would, please.
The people elected, like I said, they know their employees. You know, if they trust their employees, I'm fine with it.
Another problem we've got over there.
I thought it was just judges.
My opinion, too many people's got keys to the courthouse.
I trust my employees.
Yeah, that's nothing to you, but I mean.
You, you probably have to ask yourself, when's the last time it's been rekeyed? And you're probably right.
But you got to understand that a lot of times, court is still going on after five o'clock.
Oh, yeah, yeah, but, but I, I mean.
You got to understand probation officers get there early.
We've got people's got keys, it's no longer affiliated with the county. I mean.
I'm not aware of that, but anyway.
Did we have it rekeyed after the incident over there last?
No.
Wouldn't we?
I got.
Or, or.
We sit down and talked about these guidelines, me and Bob and Sheriff and, you know, we, we sit down and agreed on guidelines to go by them, who got a badge and who didn't and all that. And we all agreed on that. And that's, I, I think that's what we need to stay by, you know?
And I'm looking at the addendums, gentlemen, and, and, you know, the judges, your district attorney, district attorneys have a right to carry. Your ADA's have a right to carry. Uh, any law enforcement officer that's in uniform or can provide credentials, because you may have somebody who's not in a uniform per se. And, uh, it was also agreed upon that, you know, obviously the commissioners, but I know the majority of you want to go through, majority of you want to be. And it says here, uh, you know, your probate judge, uh, all your, all your judges, so and your revenue commissioner Barbara Cooper. Circuit clerk, uh, Denise, I will mispronounce the name.
McPherson.
But we, you know, just agree upon that, we're willing to abide by or enforce whatever the elected officials decide, decide upon. We don't come in and dictate policy or procedure, we offer recommendations, but we will enforce whatever the elected officials.
What did you say on the, uh, police or sheriff uniforms?
Yes, or thorough uniforms or can show credentials. Uh, the reason being, sir, is it may be an undercover agent, it may be a, a state agent coming in for a trial.
Well, uh, I think like Kevin knows who, who that is, but I don't know if our guards, you know, if you wanted in the courthouse to hurt somebody or did something, you can throw on them. Fake police dude to walk up, you know, they say you'd pass you on through. I just will make sure they know who it is.
They'll know who it is, cause you're talking about credentials, that's a certain.
Go see an ID.
ID from that department, an ID badge, state badge of some sort, so they'll know that.
Right.
And that's what we would do, sir, is make sure they're trained on identifying the badge, which is what they typically do now.
Right. Kind of get a, a card to go by.
And so, we occasionally get someone from the drug task force, someone coming in that's not dressed in the, you know, identifiable police uniform.
These were the individuals that during the security meeting, which I was the new speaker was in, the elected officials requested that these be the ones that were allowed to have a badge to bypass security.
Basically same ones you read off.
Yes, yes.
I basically agree with that list, but the, I would, for the commissioners, being an exception, I wouldn't be careful of that being a struggle.
Not what they need.
I mean, even though this is what we agreed on, so.
So, we're gonna agree on this?
Yeah.
If you agree on this list, I'll, I'll get my secretary to start making those picture ID badges.
Do we have any objections to this list?
We have no objection.
No.
Do we agree to this list?
Do we need to make a motion?
These lists need to be in the mo, uh, need a motion.
I'll make a motion, we agree to this list.
I'll say.
All papers say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, same thing, so this, uh, this is.
I got one more question.
Yes, sir.
Suppose somebody comes in, are the guards trained enough? Is shooting the only option? I mean, what's available, I mean, if something happens, what are they trained to do?
Hey, your question about the training, we, we're trying to use five echelons of force. We try to utilize the same forces she typically taught at the academies to, uh, de-escalate the situation. Now, obviously, the situation's going to take, you know, precedence on how you respond. If someone comes in with a firearm, showing aggressive nature, you're going to skip steps one, two and three to, to max the force. But they are taught, one, it starts with their physical appearance and their verbal commands and their discussion with them, trying to talk the person down from a bad situation. Uh, and that's one thing that we're going to continue to provide the officer some more training on, uh, on how to handle a particular situation. If it starts to get ugly, we simply call the security department and they routinely have a deputy pre, pretty quick to, to handle it. We just want to try to de-escalate things down, uh, to the middle. I mean, we've been fortunate that I've seen very few, uh, a lot of times, situations like that, a lot of times, the officer has the boss kind of in their, their court. I say the officer, the security officer, how they handle a situation. They come across too aggressive, uh, that's really not the right thing to do, it can irritate the, the visitor, you just kind of keep things kind of low key.
Question, so, the items that they have caught there at the security cop, how does that compare to any other courthouse I do, or do you have that any kind of?
Then, so the numbers comparable to this courthouse is, is, is a lot higher than other courthouses. And, uh, that's, we started this policy in two thousand sixteen, I'm still surprised that we have this many, uh, you know, weapons, contraband being identified. So, I have to think, Dale, honestly, were we enforcing this the entire time, the way that it needed to be enforced? Maybe we weren't. Uh, we've got new security officers who, I mean, just, they're breath of fresh air, quite honestly. They're professional, they're, they're following the procedures and, and the Sheriff and I went back over, uh, with plan, with process, I mean, everything is, is being done, you know, the way it's supposed to be. That allows you to get an accurate reading of what, what's been there. Uh, majority of this, honestly, is, is the gentleman shows up, he's go get his tags and he's got his pocket knife in his pocket. That's as you see that. Now, the weapons are a little concerning, but as I identified, majority of those are, are female visitors who have one in their purse. And then they go through the metal detector, it's identified and we've had no pushback, they, they, they take it back to their vehicle, they leave it in their vehicle and they go back into the courthouse.
What about our, we, last time, I think we spoke about cameras, have all the cameras been installed that we, uh, felt like was necessary?
Can the security guards look at the cameras?
No.
They need to be looking at them. They need to be know what's going on in the courthouse.
There was some issue that initially arose in two thousand and sixteen about the reason why the monitors were placed in the Sheriff's office and the probate judge's office.
Well, can we have some for place where they're at?
I don't know, I can't remember what the issue is, but I can go back on my file and see what it was. I don't know if it was the technology.
Something going on in the courthouse, they need to know. I mean, they need to be watching it.
Well, sir, I, I don't disagree. Uh, where the officers are located, if we had a monitor upon the wall and if they're able to look and see it, maybe someone in the tax assessor's office is, you know, someone acting, you know, out of character or acting, acting up. The officer could always make a round and go up there and even maybe reach out to the Sheriff's Department for, for someone to come.
And I know people think we're being maybe silly about this, employees and about people coming in and out, but every time you watch the news, first thing somebody says, well, I didn't think they would do that.
That's, that's always the case, somebody didn't think.
It's always the case, they didn't think they would do that, they weren't capable of doing that. And I mean, that's the way, that's a sad world we live in, but that's the way it is.
So, during my interaction over there, and, uh, I also have a, um, subordinate manager that's, uh, actively involved is Eric Kelso. Eric's interaction with the officers and seeing the, the public coming in, your visitors, constituents, we see the very positive feedback between the visitors, constituents and, and the office. And majority of them understand why they're there. Uh, the, the employees are the ones who seem to get a little frustrated and irritated that they have to do this stuff. Uh, and, uh, you know, again, we're only going to enforce what you, like first and fourth.
And it's more so for their safety than anyone's.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Employees are the ones driving more than anyone.
Yeah, and it's for their sake.
They go in and out, you know, they go to work in the morning and they leave for dinner and they come back, they don't want to go through the security check. And that's just.
It's like, well, it don't take five seconds to walk through.
What are we talking about? Let it in a minute.
That's a problem.
Any other questions for Mr. Hargrove? We appreciate you, with coming to speak with Mr. Hargrove. Next on our list, we have asking for two members of twin water board be replaced. And the, the ones on our list here to be, uh, has to replace, uh, the, Mr. Nathaniel South to replace Mr. Weeks on a six-year, uh, term. to replace Mr. Weeks on a six year, uh, term. I hear a motion, we, uh, form itself as replacement for James Weeks as he is retiring. This comes as a, a request of the Twin Water System.
I'll make a motion.
But we have nothing to do with this other than.
We have nothing to do with this, we, we appoint, uh, we appoint members only.
I second that motion.
Uh, before we go, let me ask, let me ask a question, who, who owns Twin Water? The city of? And do they have, uh?
I think Twin still owns it, don't they?
Sir?
Does Twin not still own it?
What I mean is this, these, will, will these people on it become owners?
Oh, I don't know about that.
There's been talk of it selling to an individual around home, us, me and Bob's been hearing talk of it selling, so.
We don't have a copy of their bio laws here in the office, but it may somewhat similar to New County Pulp of Water Board where you appoint board members, but the board itself won't determine if it's qualified privacy, um.
What I'm saying is, will these, uh, new members take over operation, day to day operations of the Twin Water System?
They might be able to. I said they may be able to, based on how their bio laws were written.
Well, once again, this would not be, uh, any liability that we would have. I got a motion, second, uh, vote on, favor say aye. Vote likewise. Also, uh, Mr. Terry May, uh, to be, uh, appointed chairman of the Twin Water Board for a six year term, replacing Mr. James Hollis due to retirement, uh, hear a motion, we accept this.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second.
Just motion second, all voters say aye. Vote likewise. Okay, uh, let's go.
Yes, sir.
Um, I've got an agreement for professional services, the Twin Guard, Marion County Commission regarding the construction and bidding process of the taxiway to the T hangars. And of course, it'll be ninety percent federal, five percent state, five percent counties for forty-two thousand dollars. And I recommend that the, the, uh, commission also have to sign and enter into that agreement.
You say ninety-five and five, or?
So it's ninety, ninety percent federal payment for ninety percent of it. The state's going to pay five percent of it, and the county would pay five percent of it, our part would be about two thousand.
How much was?
About four, uh, forty-two thousand.
Forty, uh, that'd be our part?
Our part, no, our part would be two thousand.
Two thousand, okay.
Approximately, yeah, five percent, forty-two, although that equals out.
They are motioning.
Does anybody get why than anything, is it why than any doubt, or just?
No, it's, it's constructing, we're going future eight T hangars, and this is the taxi lane where the planes can get over to the T hangars. The T hangars will be led at a later date as funding becomes available. And we hope to let this hopefully around June of this year, let it contract.
Or do we stand on the Bunnell Electric Ground or whatever, Father, do you hang?
Uh, the reason I'm asking, I had a gentleman ask me. Well, we're showing twenty twenty-two, it is our future date, it's what we're showing, we already have enough money to do it, but we might be able to, to get some money and do it sooner than that, so it's really, it's kind of tentative right now, there's not a set date. We hope, we hope to do funding this summer and get the, the taxiway up to the T hangars ready to go.
You know, it is also good, uh, one sense, we are able to keep our, our port upgraded and improving with, uh, very little, uh, our output, our own, I mean, it's very few things, uh, uh, we can put five percent.
Ninety percent's a pretty good investment.
Ninety-five, yeah.
Pretty good investment.
Yes, and sometimes a little more than that.
Yeah.
We have got better than that.
Yeah, it, it used to, it used to be ninety-five, five and two and a half and two and a half.
Yeah, ninety-seven, eight, ten times.
So.
Higher motion, we ignore.
Chairman, enter into that agreement with the Harvard County.
I'm making.
Motion second, all voters say aye. Vote likewise.
I've got a pad if you just want to sound, a little pad, and that's all I've got.
Is Scott waiting on Scott?
He is, someone checking out yours if he's coming that way.
Going to executive session?
Might we still, uh, plan on starting patching back first June?
Yeah, y'all need to kind of let me know what direction y'all want, who wants to go first. We can line all that up, I just don't know, I think we left it, y'all are going to get with me, let me know what, who, what direction y'all want to go in, or what order.
Me and Dale are still working on trucks.
I thought we said Bob, start Bob, didn't we?
It don't matter to me.
Well.
It don't matter to me either. It don't matter to me, we'll start. I just need about two days notice before I can get some slag in. Bring it in any quicker, it has a tendency to leave.
You still were dumping my shit, I got to get pants.
Well, I, I do, two places, but one place where I need some. Hoping one day that I will. Not too fast of getting wheelbarrow filled, but when you go by and get a dump truck, it's probably.
Can I have five minutes of kind of?
Sheriff.
Yes, sir.
Before y'all go into executive session?
Long as you don't give, take give up anytime.
Been up since two o'clock this morning, have jail issues, that y'all may have heard, I don't know. Have forty-two women incarcerated in New County Jail. Uh, they kind of got rammed up this last night, tore up one of the main water lines and several, flooded the whole jail pretty much, took, took the water out. Giving you some dates, uh, to ask a question, where do, where do we stand on maybe signing the contract with PH and J architects? We've never signed yet, do you know?
Well, we're, uh.
I know, we met with them.
We're, yes, we met with them, and we're still, you know, uh, to meet with people that's going to advise us on how to fund.
Right.
Uh, so I think we need, uh, soon as we see Scott to give us an update on this. Of course, I'm, it's gonna be late this year to get funding, but anyway, we get started.
I understand that, but, uh, you know.
We have, uh, as you well know, you, you've, uh, done more about the S I, probably one else, neither were, that's situational.
How, yeah, how we stand with it, how we stand.
Decide, we're, we're good to get.
Good.
Yeah. I actually met with, uh, one of the, the board members on just apart, uh, yesterday at lunch at church. He asked me about it, he asked, where are we staying on our part? I said, well, it's a slow progress, I, you know, so I said, so I understand that, he understands. But they're willing to work, and so they're, you know, it's, it's no problem. Uh, I know the funding's the biggest thing we're working at.
Yeah.
But gentlemen, we got to do something, I'm, I'm about, um.
Yeah, that's.
I about had enough of it down there, I tell you, I've been a hundred, a hundred and fifty-nine in jail for a whole day to six. Uh, federal goings coming in, I know they are at some point in time, they're going to come after all of us, I would think.
Well, I'm going to say we.
The main issue is the funding and.
I know the main issue, we got to get off, we got to.
We got to get, we got to get it down, pipe it, or we can show that we'll, how we can afford it, and what we do, how we're going to pay for it, and then get the wheel over and do, and we need to know that.
Scott, would you, uh, I know you just walked Scott. I know you just walked in, but we're, we're speaking, of course, I'm sure you know as well as we do that, uh, out of control, rampage at jail, I had mine tore half up, uh, or what, or what point are we, uh, in this process of funding and finding a way to funding and, uh, meeting with our particular people and signing a contract with someone to actually, uh, get something down in our pursuit of a new jail?
Right, well, we, we've got the architect on board, it's just a matter of, of, you know, signing the, the contract, if, if that's what y'all are good with. We've spoken with, on the funding, our legislative staff, uh, members with the state about potential things that we can do within the next year or so as far as funding, and we've talked with Senator Shelby and Congressman Hatterhold about funding as well, and we're getting Senator Shelby some information that probably will go out to him today, um, about trying to secure some funding, uh, if nothing else, more than a, just a kickstart for us to be able to get, get going, uh, with it, but that's where we are right now.
Well, what all do we have to do to be able to sign a, a contract with PH and J?
PH and J.
PH and J, um, it's ready to go.
I mean, we can do this without the funding, uh, uh.
Yes.
Plan?
Yes, yes.
Has they, have they got us any plans to draw them up yet?
I think they have, just tentative, so.
Let me interrupt, uh, I went to Montgomery one day, sat down with PH and J, Rian Jones, one of his lead architects, and give them an idea of what Marion County needs, what we need. No cost, this is no cost, so they're, they're, they're sketching a preliminary catch, sketch right now. And once the contract is signed with them, we don't owe them anything, okay? Uh, they can give us numbers, exactly what it will cost, and they can know exactly where to go from there, so. That's, I've already done that step, and we're going to do some more steps too, but.
I meant that.
They can't proceed until you sign a temporary order of the contract with them, that's where we at.
We, uh, we're at the point, and we discussed with Scott about this before also, as far as being, having a construction, uh, console to, to keep, to look out, or do they, PH and J?
PH and J have their own, they have like a team of twenty people, they do it all, they do the project manager part of it, they do all of it together. If you hire a project manager, Bob, they're going to get five percent of that project at least, and not have any responsibilities or liabilities, you understand that?
I understand that.
That's five percent more it's going to cost Marion County if you hired an individual project manager.
I think you say find a loophole.
Yes, yes, with it, with one big company, and PH and J is not the only big company, but at least large companies, they have it all within their own departments.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, Woodwill, we're fixing to go into executive session for a bit, but we're waiting on our former member back, so, uh, Woodwill, until that time when Luke's signing bills, uh, we're waiting for the executive session when he gets back.
Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com backslash forty-nine county news TV.